Should be a long day because there's going to be a lot of business, right? A little contested, right?
Yeah, I didn't. I know it's a Friday they have like 20,000 mail in bills.
Really?
No.
I nailed mine in. Wow. We get good luck.
That'll be a good experiment to see how long it takes them to count down this election. Just. Prozek, how are you doing?
Oh, there's Brian. Hi, Brian. And there's more. That's so boring.
I'm sure you didn't see this.
Yeah.
Got many for here. Probably should have. Oh, Prozek, can you hear us?
Yes. Robert. Yes. Three months. Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, we've got a, we've got a forum. I, not, Mr. Prozek, I'm not sure it can hear us or not. Haven't heard him respond, but between Kate and Jim Payne and Harry and Brian Rader, we do have a forum, so if you want to get going, Kate.
Call us to order. Oops. Somehow you're, we're not getting your video, your audio, Kate.
The, the.
You might have turned your audio, we're not getting you very well. No.
I can hear you.
Okay, I said, "Call to order." For the June 1st, 2020 meeting of the Planning Commission regular meeting and work session agenda. And I would like to discuss the approval of minutes. Are there any comments or changes to that?
No changes, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I hear a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right.
All right. So moved, thank you. At this point, any public comments are welcome, or anything that's not on the agenda listed later. I don't see that we have.
We have nobody here in the room with us, and we have all the comments you received, I think we received are in the agenda, so.
All right, very good, moving on. The Ashcraft ARMA event on June 26, 2020, the June 28.
Lost your audio again, Kate.
I'm sorry? My audio?
I can hear you.
I can hear Kate.
I can hear you. All right.
Okay, let me look to the audio hard. Can you hear her, Matt?
Can you hear her?
Okay.
Nicole.
I can't hear Nicole now.
Start with the four. Doug, can you hear me?
I can hear you now. You might have tried turning. Increase, increase your, your audio output from your.
Can you hear me?
We can't hear you in the room for some reason. Hang on a second.
I, I'm not sure what to do about that.
Try again, Nicole.
Well, Nicole.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Doug?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay, so I will go ahead with the Ashcraft AHRMA event. They are looking to get a temporary use permit for the American Historic Race.
Race.
28th, the AHRMA is a national organization. It's a motorcycle club, I believe. And they are aware of the COVID-19 pandemic situation that might impact their event, and they will be required to follow all state mandated regulations surrounding that. The motocross event will be held at 177 Ashcraft Lane on Saturday, with a cross-country event to be held following Sunday at 180 Ashcraft Lane. There was an attached letter in the agenda that kind of outlines some of the safety measures and other services provided at this event that they have held before. So the Planning Commission should review those items and let us know if there are any questions, and we can go from there.
Nicole, I have a question. So I don't remember seeing this in the past. My, my question, I guess, is, it's that little stretch of road is kind of tricky. So am I right that there's, where that driveway comes out at, it's kind of, I feel like there is, I guess, is there a concern there about traffic or not?
I'm not sure, Doug, or maybe Steve, do you guys have any thoughts on traffic for the event? Because I don't think Ken is supposed to.
The, yeah, this is the first time we've seen this. They held the event last year. We found out about it after the fact and told them that they would need a temporary use permit to hold it again. So they've cooperated and done everything that we've asked of them to do for this temporary use permit. I, yeah, I know, there's no, as far as we knew, there weren't any problems last year with traffic. I don't know that they're expecting maybe 200 people or something like that. They gave some estimates for different times, so it's, it's not a huge event, but on the other hand, it's big enough that it trips our per, our temporary use requirements.
It doesn't sound like there's that visible, is that driveway? Do they need to put a tripod up there or something to, oh, blur motorists? But perhaps that's not necessary.
I know, we, we asked the police if there were any issues, and I don't believe we got any comments back, right?
Okay. No further questions from me.
Okay, then Doug, do we need to do anything or just move on?
Yeah, I need to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to either approve or not approve it. There was one comment from residents about noise. The police chief did respond to them and tell them, you know, for late night issues, to contact, how to contact the police, and, you know, people shouldn't be up there. This event doesn't, it's just all daytime stuff, but I guess there have been some instances of people running around with off-road vehicles, you know, well after dark. And that would not be allowed under our noise ordinance, so the neighbors who did contact us, we did give them that information.
Well, so how can we modify our recommendation to the board to make sure that this is noted, so noted and communicated?
However you'd like to, however you'd like to word it.
Well, they, they do say in their application that it should be done by about 4 o'clock, so I'm not sure what we can, I get, maybe we could emphasize that.
Yeah, we, I mean, we've asked them to apply for a noise waiver too, and as part of that, I mean, if you want them, if you want to put a condition like, you know, they must be done by 7 o'clock or something like that. Right now, the, you know, the noise ordinance would probably, it speaks to unreasonable noise, so at some point in the day, the noise, you can run your motorcycles around during the day, but at some point late in the evening, it gets unreasonable, and then the police would take action on that, so. But you could put a time limit on it if you'd like.
I think we should. What do you think, Planning Commission?
Yeah, 9:00 PM.
Yeah, I was going to say 6:00, but that's okay.
Let's split the difference and call it 8:30.
Brian, I go, Brian, I go to bed early. But I won't, so I don't care.
I guess my question is, what time does the sun go down?
That's why I said 9:00.
About 9:00, yeah. Brian, I'm okay with 9:00, that's fine.
You know, when the sun starts setting, it's time to, it's time to put the loud toys away.
You could just say sunset too, or if you like.
So can we do that? Can we have a motion to move that forward?
Sure.
So I'm.
I make a motion to approve with a 9:00 PM noise ordinance.
Leave the motion, do it a second.
I'll second.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? So moved, thank you very much. Let's move on to item five, the North Atherton Farmers Market Friday Sales Temporary Use Permit. Who wants to walk us through that?
I will do that. So I do want to note the correction that it is not Home Depot requesting this temporary use permit. It is the North Atherton Farmers Market, so my apologies for that error. But they, they are requesting to have a farmers market from May 15th through November 20th. In the attached materials, there was a little section of the parking lot of Home Depot noted where they would like to, to have the market open from 11:00 AM until 2:00 PM on Fridays. And I also wanted to note that this is in addition to the current Saturday operations that they have. And again, all of these state mandated COVID-19 requirements will apply to this as well. So if you guys want to discuss this, or if you have any questions for us.
Well, the first obvious question is, May 15th, and this is June 1.
Um, yeah, I don't, I, we.
No.
Ken has been dealing with them. I think, I told them if they wanted to start a week or two before we got around to seeing their materials, that's fine. We didn't want to get in the way of something that might be useful to the, to the community, so. I don't know exactly, I don't believe they've been out there yet, but that's all I can tell you about the start date. And the question is more succinctly, from, from now, moving forward.
Well, then I would amend the language here to say from 6:01 instead of May 15th.
On June 5th, Friday.
Doug, this will go to the board next week, is that right? Or, wow.
No, the 17th.
That we're in June 1.
That's, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do we need to change it?
I, if the, I would just say, leave it for, with the board's recommendation, or the Planning Commission's recommendation is 6:01, Doug.
Sorry, Doug, you broke up. Can you say that again, please?
I would go with how you'd stated it, Kate, to approve it from Jan, from June 6th or whatever this Friday is to November 20th.
That makes sense to me. I assume we have to vote on this?
Correct.
So do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion. That we go ahead and approve the permit, or recommend the approval of the permit, excuse me.
With the amended language?
Yes.
And do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Those opposed? Very good, all right. So that brings us to a very brief end of a very brief agenda. Except the status report on pending items. Nicole or Doug, or anyone want to walk us through those?
Go ahead, Nicole.
I can do that. So we did take the Benner Township to donate update comments to the board, and the board also endorsed the comments as you did, so the comment letter was sent out to Benner Township. And the amendments to Planterport District is still on hold at this point. And to give you a brief update on the trail connecting that area through Penn State land, myself and other staff members are still kind of going back and forth with Penn State about some potential routes through that, but we are looking to schedule another meeting here in the coming weeks, so we are moving forward a little bit with, with some ideas there. So not sure if I'll have stuff ready for you by the next meeting, but it's possible. But I will continue to keep you updated on how that's progressing. And then affordable housing is the work item that we will talk about in our upcoming work session.
Very good, thank you.
Sure.
All right, any other items for the Planning Commission session?
Hey Doug, can we have an update on the bike trail? I'm happy to see that's progressing on Valley Vista.
It's progressing, they've started, and hopefully they'll be done, I think, probably September or October.
Great.
So they're, they're, they're not moving real fast right now, but we, hopefully the pace will pick up here sometime soon.
Right.
There's a shortage nationally of bikes to be sold because so many people are turning to bicycles in lieu of public transportation. So the sooner we can get this all hooked up, the better. Close this June 1 session. The chat. Info for, for the work session. Alex and Steve and Brian and audio. However, Steve, that doesn't record this part, right?
We're going to let him keep going here today.
All right. Why is that, Doug? Hello? Doug?
Yeah, I'm having a hard time hearing you. I'm trying to, hang on a second, let me. Okay, Nicole, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, I can hear you much better now.
That's great. I, I mean, that's fine.
So, so why are we keeping Steve out on board? Just curious.
Give him, give him, give him some work to do.
Oh, I'm all in favor of that.
Ten, ten minute meetings, it takes them longer to set up and also break down afterwards, so they might as well stay around a while. There's the Prozex.
Oh, there he is, hi. All right, so let's begin our Planning Commission work session with the potential approaches to affordable housing in Patton Township. And again, Nicole, I want to give a huge shout out to you for doing all this legwork.
Yeah.
Oh, no problem.
Want to walk us through this, please?
Sure. So as I mentioned when I gave the update, the only real work session that we have ongoing at this point is the affordable housing that we're looking at. So at the last meeting, we did go ahead and identify three new areas to consider. So the first one that was selected was to consider permitting duplexes in the R2 district. So at this point, when we first discussed this, we were talking about lots of greater than 10,000 square feet. But as it turns out, that is basically almost all of the R2 district. So what we need to do at this point is to kind of narrow that scope a little bit because we don't necessarily want to allow duplexes in the entirety of the R2. So we have attached a table that shows the different tiers of lot sizes and the cumulative percentage of the R2 district that they represent. And I have also attached a series of maps to kind of give you a visual representation of the lot sizes that are out there and where exactly they are. So we can kind of make sure that we're getting kind of a little bit more of a mix in where duplexes are permitted. And then the other thing I wanted to note is that we do want to make sure that any of these duplexes will be on public sewer. So the maps all have kind of an outlined area that shows where there isn't public sewer, so we can make sure to try to keep that in mind that those areas will not be under consideration for allowing duplexes. So I had Alexandra prepare a poll for us so that we can vote on what we think the threshold for lot sizes for allowing duplexes in the R2 should be. So I don't know, Alex or Doug, whoever wants to bring up that poll. Or if you guys want to talk about it a little first before we jump into, to making the selection, we can do that as well. If you have any questions about how we came up with this, or the mapping, or anything.
The poll is up, I don't, can everyone see it right now?
I can see it.
I, so I see it.
Okay.
I'm interested to know Brian's thoughts on this as a Realtor.
For some reason, I can't see it.
I can't hear you, Brian.
No, I mean. I should be hearing a buzz.
Okay, I'm back. I just was muted. Anyways, I guess.
You just have to tell me what they're doing.
Hey Doug.
Yeah?
I, I guess I was feeling like. I guess I was feeling like, you know, a third of an acre is still pretty small.
So Brian, give me a feel for a third of an acre. How much, if it's a square lot, how much road frontage do I have?
Oh, a lot of times like, it's probably about 30 feet.
Oh, wow.
Would you agree with that, Doug?
A third of an acre is about 14,000 square feet, 14 to 15.
Yeah.
Whoops, this is my microphone there, so I don't know. So 30 square feet on the on the road front, that's 10 yards. That's not a huge amount.
No.
Missed that part of the conversation.
I guess, you know, we could always, I would say that maybe it ought to be at least, at least 16,000 to 17,000, 16 to 18,000 at minimum.
Well, we, I mean, just, we have lots that are small as 5,000 square feet.
Really?
Yeah.
Where?
In many of the ones in the village at Penn State along President's Drive are 6,000 square feet. Some of the ones behind Lowe's are probably in that seven. I mean, these aren't in the R2. They're in different zoning districts. But, you know, you could put a house on a small lot.
You're right, Doug. But I guess what I'm thinking there is just vehicular parking.
Well, that would be, I mean, if we require parking, they're gonna have, you know, we have a 6,000 square foot lot. That's a house and two off-street parking spaces.
So can I ask this question? Maybe the real question is parking. So maybe, why do we, if it's a really small house, I'm sorry, if it's a real small lot and if you can park on the street, then maybe the size of a lot is less significant.
So I have also attached the R3 regulations where we do allow duplexes. And I made sure to put in additional parking regulations that we have so we could see what we require in general and also think about on-street parking. So we want to maybe start with that portion of discussion before we go ahead and do the poll.
Well, let me just jump in for a second. I mean, I think the issue of not of setting a minimum lot size was, we didn't believe that the planning commission intended to put a duplex on every lot in the R2 district. So probably the easiest way to limit it is to set some sort of minimum lot size.
In agreement.
That would limit it to a proportion of the lots in R2. I don't, if you'd like us to come up with some other way to do that, we can think about it. But at this point, I don't know that we have another option for you.
So I was gonna say, Brian, just to get everybody's visual of what the size of a third of an acre really kind of is, if you imagine a regulation football field, one acre is from the one-yard line all the way out to the opposing side's 10-yard line. So that's one acre. Divide that in three, and that's kind of what you're talking about for 1,400 square feet for a third of an acre. So, yeah, I kind of think that that's kind of small when you do get into having, you know, backyards and front yard and et cetera. So I actually like your idea of looking at parking or parking facilities around that. So you could go smaller, but is there available parking?
But I think, Doug, you're looking, you're looking from us to try and just come up with a plan. And the easiest definition goes by lot size. Is that true, Doug?
If you want to limit it, so it, not every lot in the R2, setting a minimum lot size would be the easiest way to do it.
I believe, I agree with that.
Yep, I do too.
Yep, same.
I don't disagree. So what do we need to do next?
Did we get poll results?
Only one person.
Did we get everybody in?
Only one person voted so far.
We were kind of on pause with that while we were discussing the parking situation.
Should I restart the poll?
Yeah.
Can you do that?
I can do that.
But Doug, I just want to clarify too, even with the lot size, there will be other stipulations that people will have to follow in our ordinances for them to be able to build duplex. So where we're trying to kind of narrow the scope a little bit, they're still going to be required to follow all the other setback and parking and every other requirement. So that even if they have a lot that size, if they can't make it work with all of our other requirements, then they may not be able to do it. Is that?
Yeah, correct.
Would that be fair to say? Okay.
Yep.
So I don't know if that helps anyone make their decision on on lot size or not.
So in terms of this poll, am I looking at 16 to 17,999 square feet as a minimum?
Yeah, that would be, if that's your selection, then yeah, that would be the minimum lot requirement to even consider being able to put that duplex there. And I don't know if Doug or whoever wants to pull up that attachment map that goes with that to get a visualization of where we would be talking about. C, that would be D, I think. Sorry for all the maps, folks. I'm a visual person, so I like to be able to see that kind of stuff. So I went ahead and threw them all in there.
I like it too.
Okay, thank you.
That's 14 to 16,000 there.
And that doesn't show up. It shows up like this.
Okay, maybe it's E.
It shows up like this. All hat.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't counting the last van.
Can you see it?
No.
Shows up well on my screen.
Go to your screen sharing options. I'll take it too. Click Stop Share.
That's really good, Nicole.
No, share again.
Oh, thank you. I mean, I didn't actually make the math, so I won't take credit for that.
And then click screen, and then it will show. The option that's already selected.
This is a team effort, so thank you to other Patton staff.
You can just hit Enter or hit Share.
No.
Now it should show up.
So I don't know if that helps anyone else kind of get an idea of where we're talking about, if we go with that bracket.
So it's the, it's the highlighted lots would be the ones that are that size. Is that correct, Nicole?
Yes. And as I mentioned, there are bold outlined areas that are not on the public sewer. So those places would not be eligible for this, for adding a duplex. Because that's another stipulation that we're gonna, we're gonna make sure works out.
Well, is there any further discussion?
Did everybody vote?
No, two people voted.
I'm still staring at, you know, I'm kind of trying to, I don't know.
Sorry, I didn't realize you could.
Yeah, I'm looking at all this, I'm looking at the Sprinkles map here and trying to figure out, you know.
Sprinkles map, that's good. I like that.
You know, how many of these people are going to come back and be mad at me for either selecting their size or not selecting their size? So.
Well, I think if you, you know, if you limited, if you said it was, you know, 14,000 and larger, that would be, you know, 29% of the lots. That would be, you could put a duplex on. And, you know, if you went to 18,000, you know, you'd say, you know, 14% of lots, you could put duplexes on. If you went down, if you went down to 12,000, then you could do whatever, 63 or 67% of the lots if you use 12,000 as a minimum.
Can I ask, these are all lots that are mostly built upon. What is the likelihood that folks will renovate and make them into duplexes?
It's a good question, but I don't know.
I mean, in essence, you know, they may not look like a full duplex, but it would be, in essence, a house that somebody turned part of it into an apartment. You know, it's the same definition, two dwelling units on one lot with each has a separate front door.
And how does, how does that differ from an adjacent dwelling unit?
I'm not sure what you mean by adjacent.
Do you mean accessory?
Accessory, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Lots of terms.
Well, we don't, we don't have accessory dwelling units. We have, you have accessory uses, but not dwelling units typically are the primary use. So they don't come up as accessory uses. A garage is an accessory use. You know, the tools shed out in the backyard is an accessory use to a, to a primary residential use. So in this case, for a duplex, your primary use would be two residential units. And you let the homeowner or the property owner configure that. Could be in many configurations. Then it could be a house that is in essence split into two units. One, you know, might be an upper floor, lower floor type of thing.
I have four votes.
We have, we're up to four votes.
I would have liked, because I thought we could always make it smaller in the future.
I was gonna say, what are you, what are your thinking, Brian? You know more about this, about residential and, and these types of thoughts? Because me looking at it from a fireside, fire is fire, and we're going to do the same with, no matter what, with these homes. So I'm kind of out of my element here.
I did, I did 18 to 20,000, 18 to 19,900.
Does anybody want to sway me a different way?
And here's why I did that. I thought, it's a new program. We can always fine tune it. But boy, you, there's no way you can go the other direction. You can't start out small and tell people we don't like it. So you better go big, and then you can change it in years to come.
Well, you make a good point. You make a good point. It's hard to go down, right?
It's impossible. It's like selling your house and wanting to raise your price after you list it.
Obviously, you haven't been to California. Okay.
Should I vote in the poll?
Now I'm gonna go, I'll submit that.
I guess Bill isn't voting yet. There's no right or wrong answer. It's, it's what your opinion is.
I was gonna say, I really think, we've been kicking this can down the road for a long time. And this could be the first sign of real progress to try and narrow it down. And as Paul said, there's still an entire ordinance that needs to be written and drafted and reviewed and final details. I just think it's great that we're finally making some progress.
And Doug, I like your suggestion of, I feel like the starting point is the lot size. I think that's a good way to start the definition.
Part of that, my, my vote was smaller, just because most of the lots already have a building on it.
I'm sharing the results.
And if somebody's gonna convert it, make it into a so-called duplex, it can be the same house, but it's gonna have a separate level or something like that, another instance for someone else. My, my mind, being from California, duplexes, two units butted side to side, under a common roof. But this is, basically, you're talking more about being stacked side to side. So I went with the smaller square footage for that reason.
So Jim, to your point, aren't we trying to encourage development or redevelopment in the areas that are already developed, right? And so, so yard size doesn't really matter in that case, does it?
Well, you want some yard, but the way I look at it is, the house I live in has a certain amount of square footage, square feet to it. You know, so the lot, you have your setbacks and everything else. So you can't really add on on a lot of units on a lot of lots. If you, if you start at a high number of square footage lot, you are eliminating a lot of people who might be interested in making a mother-in-law or rental unit inside their house.
I'm sharing the polling results. Can everybody see them?
Yes.
Yep.
So it looks like we had five people vote, and there's kind of a clear winner. So even if anybody else wanted to add in, because we have, do we have five planning commission members? Did everyone on the planning commission get to?
We have six.
Say what they, okay. So I don't know if that sixth person still wants to vote, but even if they did, wouldn't necessarily sway the results. So the dominant response is that 18,000 to 19,999. So I can work on that if you guys can be in agreement and would like me to use that as the base.
Anyone object to that? All right, let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Sure.
All right. So do we want to move on to the next option? Or do we want to discuss the duplexes some more?
Unless I hear anything else, I think we should move on.
Okay. So the next option that was identified was mandating inclusionary units with or without density bonuses. So for this item, I went ahead and attached what some of the other center region municipalities are doing with their affordable housing. And I went ahead and made sure to include what we are already doing as well. So we could kind of start there with the base of this discussion when it comes to inclusionary units. So if anybody has anything in particular that they would like to say about that, or anything specifically they would like me to research more and come back with.
Who wants to jump on this one? Well, so I just wonder, in the post-COVID or middle of COVID world, like, how is this gonna impact any of these zoning regulations in terms of like housing and, and demand and student housing? Any thoughts?
I mean, it could go any number of ways. This system could kind of correct itself a little bit with the housing affordability. I'm not really sure what the long-term impacts are gonna be, or if it's gonna be just kind of a wait-and-see situation and then everything rebounds to be more or less how it is now. I don't really know. At this point, it's still kind of too early to tell. I don't know if anyone else has thoughts.
Brian, what do you think?
I kind of agree. I think, yeah, I think, well, I don't think a whole lot will change. It will resume back to normal and, and have our same issues. I think, Kate, the biggest thing that COVID-19 is gonna do is gonna take a hit on the commercial real estate downtown, the vacancy rates. But that's not what this conversation is about. So I don't think this is as, as sensitive.
Okay. I would like to check in with our Realtor.
Hey Nicole, is there any language about the proximity of, in the borough, you can't have, there, there is limitations on, like, for example, student rentals. There's a limitation on how close they can be together. Did we look at any of that?
I have not looked into that specifically, but I could easily find out what parameters they put on their student rentals if we're interested in looking at that. I have not looked into that specifically, but I, I could easily find out what parameters they put on their student rentals, if we're interested in, in looking at that for just overall affordable housing.
Yeah, that specifically applies to single-family homes that are, they're called student homes, I believe, and there's a limit, they can only be so close to each other. And that's predicated on the, on the basis that students are not, are not, not a protected class of residents, so you can discriminate against them.
So we wouldn't really be able to put that sort of stipulation on just affordable housing in general?
Well, hang on.
I mean, it's, I mean, the, the borough does it to limit student housing. I mean, it doesn't really create more units, it just, it keeps students, if, if you're gonna have things, if, if you think you're gonna have a lot of student rentals, a lot of homes turn into student rentals, then it might be something you consider, but we haven't encountered that issue really like the borough has.
So it's not really something that applies to our discussion?
Well, hang on.
At this point, okay, go ahead, clarify what you.
Okay, so, in the borough, they have gone to enormous lengths and in enormous finite detail about the subject matter. So, in the borough, you cannot buy a house and have, and have it be a student rental, so that's not legal. The only way it's legal is if the, is if there is a student rental permit already issued on that house. So, just so we're all on the same page, two miles away where is our township, they call it Borough, and they're all about this. So I'm, I'm feeling as though it's worthy of us just examining it to some extent, because, you know, what are we trying to capture here? And the other thing is, I guess the truth is, if we allow homeowners to rent to students, and our goal is affordable housing, then we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot, because if the student's willing to pay more money, then that's who's gonna rent the unit, not the affordable housing folks.
You make a good point.
I'm just not, I don't know, I mean, I'm feeling like these are residential neighborhoods, and I'm, and because it's legal, let me repeat, it is legal to discriminate against students, because people buy in a residential neighborhood because they don't want to be next to a, to students. So I think there's some sensitivity that maybe the homeowner doesn't want students next door, and I'm okay with that.
So you're concerned if we allow for more affordable housing, that that's just gonna be taken up by the students?
Yeah, because it's gonna be taken up to who pays the most, so if the, if the rich parents have a student that can pay that rate, then that's who gets the rental unit, and then we've not accomplished anything with affordable housing, and then my other concern is, if you live in these neighborhoods, it's generally because you don't want to be next to students. There's a reason why you can discriminate against students, because many people want them to be in certain areas. So I guess I'm, I'm, I'm wondering, is, is the goal to, now, the, the other side of it would be, the homeowners coming to town, the homes are expensive, and we're just trying to accommodate them to put another 400 bucks in their pocket, 500, whatever. I'm just feeling like, I, I'm not certain this is appropriate to, what is, what do we want as a township? Do we want to have these homes be occupied by students? I'm asking that question to you guys.
So, as a member of the university community, I would say, we need to be very cognizant of the enormous debt load that our students carry when they graduate. And we should not be supporting necessarily, you know, huge rents, huge rental rates for our undergraduates who are carrying student loans.
Correct, so, I, I don't dispute that either, so when we talk about students, we can also talk about undergrad and graduate.
Okay. Say more.
So if we, we could either, we could either draft the ordinance so that it could be, so that students could rent it without any issues, or we could draft an ordinance that would say to be rented to graduate student, there's a way to define that, or no students at all.
So, my feeling is, if we want to increase affordable rental housing, the students are, don't worry about the students, because ultimately, people are not going to put, as I see it, people are not gonna put money into putting in a rental home or a rental unit on their home if they think that they can't get, you know, some, somebody in there, so that's gonna reduce the amount of people that's gonna do it. So letting people rent to students is, is fine in my book, because you're not, the, the, these homes, we're already talking small lots, you're probably not gonna be packing, you know, eight or nine students in, in one little apartment there, and even if that was the case, you have, you have occupancy rules that can, that'll help dissuade it. So I don't think it's really that much a problem of, of allowing people to rent to students when the, when the homeowner is actually living at the house. I think where people don't want students living next to them is, is when they, is when there is no adult present, essentially. I know that they're all over the age of 18, that technically they're adults, but, you know.
Yeah, Bill, you might be right on that, it might be a non-issue, because the, the way we're, we have it in mind, it's gonna be owner-occupied anyway, so perhaps that's accurate.
Yeah, I, I, I honestly think that when you have an owner, the owner's going to likely self-discriminate anyways against students. And also, people that are probably gonna do this are going to be like, hey, I can get a student. So I think we shoot ourselves in the foot if we actually say, oh, you can't have students, because then you're not gonna get the people to actually invest and actually do build these, these additional units. So I, I think, you know, yes, there's good, maybe people that are upset with this and are gonna bring up that I don't want to live next to a student, but again, you, it's an owner-occupied structure. You know, their likelihood of them being, of that really being an issue is probably we're wasting more time on this than, than we really need to. So I, I have no problems with just going forward, and whatever we set the lot size as, let them to rent to whoever they want to rent to.
I agree, Bill, that's a good point.
Bill, I think I agree with that, too.
Yep. Same here, it's, it's up to the owner.
And I think, I think we do disservice to our students by assuming that they'll behave badly, because the majority of them don't, right? And they're, they're here for a reason, and that's to get their education, and, and not their, you know.
Well, let's face it, we all behave badly at some time or another, and you don't have to be a student to behave badly.
There's that. All right, so where do we need to go with this, Doug?
Hey Doug, is there?
Well, I guess we can let Nicole start working on some ordinance for duplexes in the R2, and I'm sure it'll go through a few modifications.
There's one last thing that I'm gonna try to, try to push, sprinkler systems, required upgrade sprinkler systems.
So.
A little more, Bill, what are your thoughts on that?
Uh, if, well, honestly, I have two thoughts, one, if you, if you're a firefighter, you're generally against them, because you'd like to see stuff burn, but stuff doesn't burn in this town anyways. But realistically, that's gonna be a big way to actually keep down fire insurance costs and fire equipment costs, is by really pushing for sprinkler systems in new dwellings, or giving people caveats that they can have additional apartment complexes or whatever, or, not apartment complexes, but additional apartments built onto their house if they invest in sprinkler system, residential sprinkler system.
Well, I would think that if we take your typical house and we add an apartment to it, I think we could all agree that the apartment is probably gonna have a fairly small kitchen. And, and maybe it's these smaller kitchens that actually do have a higher propensity of catching, of having there be a fire in the kitchen.
I, I would, I would actually, most of the time that we have the, just your, your standard sort of small kitchen fires, generally, they are, I'm gonna say student-related, just because we have just a large number of them, so almost any call that we have is gonna be student-related. But, you know, it's, it's generally somebody's left something on the stove, and that's usually not going to even pop a sprinkler system, that's, you know, you just smoke detectors going off, and that's alerting people to get up that there's a problem.
I'd like to throw this out there, so what if we have a, a house, and then someone decides they want to take advantage and have this apartment, and then they decide to rent to someone who is classified as a sexual predator?
What?
Correct, so, in the state of Pennsylvania, if you're a convicted sexual predator, you're required to be on Megan's List. And I don't know if those individuals are a protected class of people or not, but I think that that could cause an issue if there is, if that were to happen, I think that, you know, that the neighbors could rightfully be angry. So, do we, are we familiar with Megan's Law, folks?
Uh, I'm familiar with it, but not familiar enough to actually speak to it as of right now.
So if you're, if you're a sexual predator, then you're required to list your addresses to where you're living.
And there's also notifications that have to go out to others in the community, yada, yada, yada. The, the, I'm familiar with it just enough to be dangerous, not enough to speak to it as to all the technical legal merits, and what can or cannot be done by, by, you know, committees such as that, I think that would be a Betsy Dupree question.
In agreement, that's Betsy.
I'm not sure what your question was, Brian.
Can you discriminate and say that, that this, that the individual is not to be on Megan's List?
I don't know that at a municipality we can say that, the, the homeowner might be able to, but we can ask the question.
Well, it, uh, okay, yeah, that's all.
I will say, the ba, there, there's a basic tenet in the law, is that you have to let even those people live somewhere in Patton Township.
I agree. But we need to have an awareness that that could happen.
They could already be in your neighborhood, just, just saying.
And in agreement. I don't think there's gonna be a way, Doug, I think it's probably not possible, if there was a way, I guess I'd like to explore the conversation further.
Well, we'll, we'll get a, we'll get a, somebody who's qualified to answer that for us.
That's a good idea, since we're all speculating here. All right, so do we have further conversation to happen today?
Do you guys want to keep going over the different choices? I did want to point out for the inclusionary zoning stuff, because I attached what the other center of region municipalities are doing. I am in conversation with Lindsay and Mark Vogel about college, and then Jenna Wargo and her, her team, Christina, about, I think Ferguson is looking to update their workforce zoning ordinance as well, so I'm gonna try to stay in the loop with what everyone else is doing, and really try to figure out what is working, what isn't working, and what's gonna be tried next, so that we can maybe kind of avoid some of the pitfalls that some of the other, some of our neighbors have already fallen into. So I just wanted to make that known to you guys, that we're all in conversation about what everyone else is doing, and what's being researched. So with the, adding the MXD2 overlay to more of the C2 properties, with this, I did attach a map, just sort of highlighting the C2 area, so we would know exactly where we were talking about this, but this one is kind of probably an even farther down the road thing, given that it relies completely on redevelopment of those sites to get, you know, some, some traction. But as Brian pointed out, some of the commercial areas may be the harder impacted by the pandemic situation, and even still, it's not really a bad idea to just throw it out there and, and plan for it and, and see what comes down the pipeline. So, I mean, that's pretty much all I have with the affordable housing stuff, I can take away our discussion from tonight and keep working on these, and bring you some new stuff back next time, I don't know if anyone else has anything they want to add, any other questions, discussions about any of them? Any staff members want to throw in anything?
The silence is reverberating.
I guess, Nicole, I do have a question, do, did we get, the next thing I think we need to talk about, I guess, maybe next meeting, is just parking.
Okay, you mean specifically for the R2?
Yeah, if we start doing this, you know, allowing these homes to have extra apartments in them, where are people gonna park?
Okay, yep, and especially now that we've, we've kind of regrouped on the lot size, that should be a little bit easier to, to narrow that, that focus a little bit on the parking conversation.
Yeah, and then, when you're doing that, if we could have some insight as to which of our streets in Patton Township are no parking streets?
Sure.
Don't forget snow in the wintertime.
Yep, and I can look into all of that stuff.
Two inches or more, no one can park in the streets.
Good point.
So, at the end of the day, we need to figure out ways to have these, these multiple dwelling units happen without disrupting the rest of the life around them, right? So, Nicole, I would look forward to your research, if you'll share with us. And is there anything else we want to discuss today? And if not, I will say thank you to Christina, and thank you to you all, and we'll, we'll talk next month.